Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's recessed meeting for the budget hearings for 2021. We are joined this morning by Councilman Wilson and welcome Mayor Paduto and his Chief of Staff, Dan Gilman, and Assistant Chief Lindsay Powell. And we have our Budget Director, Bill Urbani. Mr. Urbani, did you have a few things you wanted to say?
Sure. I will start off here. The Office of the Mayor, the mission is to provide leadership, strategic direction, and administrative oversight to all aspects of city government operations, and to develop and implement policy reflective of the goals and priorities of the citywide community. There are no changes to any positions within the Office of the Mayor this year, and simply a minor $2,000 increase in supplies. Traditionally, there's also the carryover of the 3% increase for non-union employees, and also reflected in the budget would be the health benefits, the increases there as well. The total amount of the Mayor's budget for 2022 is $1,437,827. Mayor oversees the entirety of the city's operation and capital budget, with the exceptions of City Council, the City Clerk, the City Controller, and the quasi-independent Citizens Police Review Board. And as I mentioned, there are no real changes from the budgetary aspect this time. So I'll give it back to you, Adam.
Thank you, Director Urbani. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Paduto. Mayor Paduto, if you want to open up and...
Thank you, Council President. As Mr. Urbani stated, the budget for next year is basically the same as this past year with a cost of living adjustment of 3% for all non-union positions. The numbers, I had the opportunity a week ago to go over those with Mayor-elect Ganey. It provides him the flexibility to create the office under his administration's priorities, which I'm sure will be different than the priorities that we had under our administration. Obviously, he can create as many full-time positions and part-time positions as he sees that will be able to meet the goals of his administration. There are no changes to the budget, and I look forward to being able, over the course of these next several weeks, to assure a very smooth transition in order to assure that the next administration hits the ground running immediately upon that first week. Although that was my first meeting with the mayor-elect, our office, and namely, the leadership within our office has been meeting on a regular basis with Mayor Ganey's leadership to assure any of the questions that they may have are answered, and also to assure that any of the records, files, and anything else that they need will be delivered in a timely fashion to them. This was something that we promised to them immediately upon his victory, and will assure all the way through and even into those early days of their administration during the months of January, February, and so on, to assure for the people of Pittsburgh that anything that we were able to do over these eight years that helped to make Pittsburgh a better city will continue as well.
Thank you, Mayor. And did you want your staff to say?
Sure. I've nothing to add. Council President, just happy to answer any questions from council members.
Do you have any questions?
Just one clarification. So with the Office of Immigration, I can't remember the exact name, but that will have to be a budget amendment for positions. And how many positions do you recommend?
Before I turn it over to Dan to get into the specifics of it, this was a part of the recommendation of the Welcoming Pittsburgh Plan. We're following through on the plan itself. This has widespread support from the community of new Americans, and it was also one of our priorities to be able to create something within city government that recognized the importance of having somewhere for people who are new to our city to go. We'd never had that before. We made it a priority, and over the past 10 years, we've been able to increase our Latino community by over 30%, and increase our Asian community by over 40%. Was that directly because we had this office? No. But having this office proved to be necessary as we saw those types of increases happening, and I believe that over the course of the next 10 years, we'll see those numbers double. So we need to continue to have something, but it may not be the priority of the next administration. So we wanted to be able to give them the flexibility to have the entire budget for what they consider to be their priorities, but not lose this in the process.
Councilman, to answer your question, if council were to approve the new office, our plan was to introduce a budget amendment that shifted the two positions that currently work with immigrant new American population into the office. So it would be a budget-neutral budget amendment. It would just be a reshifting of the existing two positions under a new title.
Thanks. I had a recent meeting with Guillermo from Hispanic Development Corporation. You were on the first slide of the founding of the Development Corporation. They had you on there. And he said this story of like, I don't know, I guess you had mentioned back when you were, you know, councilperson, that, you know, there was a need. And so anyway, just interesting part of history.
As you know, Bill is Gee, or William is Guillermo. So he's my fellow Guillermo, as I often say. Yeah. He's a good man.
Yeah, it was a great meeting. I don't have any further questions then.
Thank you. Thank you. I apologize. Well, we're trying to get through this virtual meeting. We're not sure which members are online, but I do know Councilwoman Strasburger has joined us, so I'm going to ask her if she has any questions. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to the Mayor and Chief of Staff Gilman and Chief Powell for being here as well. I really just have one clarifying question as well, and that is about, well, I guess I heard, Mayor, what you said about leaving some flexibility for the incoming administration, and I wondered if you could speak to the Office of Community Affairs, and whether that is part of building in or leaving some level of flexibility. And I guess, were those positions that were previously allocated in this past year's budget replaced in some way, or allocated just in a different way into different departments or into different offices?
Sure. When we came in, we wanted to be able to create a non-political, basically, a field organization that would be part of the Planning Department that would report back to both council and our office in understanding what the concerns were from the community. And the community wouldn't be political in nature, so it wouldn't be through activist organizations, but it would be through community-based organizations and community development corporations. And their job would be to attend all of those different meetings to get that information back so that as urban planners within the Planning Department were putting together community plans together with neighborhoods, they were also putting together the concerns and the needs of those neighborhoods. Presently, we don't have anybody in that office, and this was one of those things that we have been working with the incoming administration to see how they want to be able to put together their own version of an OCA. I'll go to Chief Gilman with the numbers and what they're looking like is we're approaching this as a budgetary issue.
Yes, Councilperson Strasburger, the position, it's been split up a bit. As the Mayor noted, these were all city planning positions. One position is in the city planning budget, and that is the employee who will work heavily with community engagement in the Engage PGH website. That position is currently filled by Leah Friedman. That is a budget-neutral amendment, just a title change within city planning. She stays in city planning at the same salary plus the cost of living. There's another position that currently is held by Giselle Bithans, who moved to Public Works. She does the work around Love Your Block, Snow Angels, City Cuts, and we really felt that that was more, they really were working more with Public Works and city planning because of that, you know, Snow Angels and City Cuts and all of that. It's more fitting there. Again, that was a budget-neutral amendment, just a shift in departments in title. And unfortunately, the other two positions, because they were vacant, are positions that we hadn't filled and got eliminated with some of the cost savings due to COVID budget revenues. So at the moment, we only have the two of the four.
Okay, that answers my questions. And that's really all I had. Other than that, I just wanted to, again, you know, reiterate what I said at Mayor, your budget address, and thank you for eight years of incredible progress. And I mean, anyone who wants to learn what all has been accomplished during your terms can read the budget, and it's right there in the first few pages of operating in the capital budgets as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. What we are trying to do with this budget is to give the next administration as much flexibility as we can to allow them to be able to create what we were able to do, which is a budget that is reflective of their priorities. So there's a lot of room, and what I expect is that come January, there probably will be amendments made to this budget that will be more reflective of a new administration. And should there not be, there is enough room for them to be able to go through a first year and be able to create some different positions under the titles that are there, and then to be able to present a budget next September to you, working with council, that will be able to adapt very, very easily into a different budget with new priorities. So we were very cognizant that this was our last budget, and we didn't try to make it into something that would tie the hands over the next administration.
Thank you, Mayor. And that's it for you, Councilwoman, correct? Any other questions? Councilwoman Strasburger?
Sorry, I didn't realize you were talking to me still. Yes, end of my questions. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And I've also been told that Councilman Lavelle and Councilman Kraus is on, so we'll also go with Councilman Lavelle.
I am on, but I have no questions at this time, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Kraus, are you still on?
I am, Madam President. Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Mayor, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for your years of service. I've kind of lost track of the number of them, but I would like to say that I certainly am a better person for having got to know you, to serve with you and beside you, and you will be greatly missed. And I thank you for your time and your dedication to the city and all that you have brought, and wish you Godspeed and all the very best life has to offer as you exit and continue in public service. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate that. For the record, I first came to work in City Hall in 1990 for Mayor Sophie Maslow, and I worked in the Department of Finance for one year. I left to move to Washington, and then I came back in 1995 in January as Chief of Staff to Dan Gilman and...
That was me.
Yeah. Yeah, Dan Cohen. I sort of served between those two Dans. But anyway, to Dan Cohen, and I will have served in city government through that era of 95 till 2022. So yeah, 27 years plus one was my time in city government, and it is a very, very, very different city than when I first came here in 1995. And to those who have been around over these past 10 years, it's a very different city. And I think that you can look at every single neighborhood within the city, if you've been here for 10 years, and be able to say with pride, we have done good work. And you can certainly look at a city as a whole, and no matter what the indicator is, if it's public safety, or if it's finance, or if it's just the overall health of the city, and be able to say over these past 10 years, we have been successful in building a better city. So, Councilman, it's been an honor to serve with you shoulder to shoulder over these many years in making neighborhoods better and over the total sum of the city of Pittsburgh, making the city a better place for those that call it home.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
End of it, Councilman?
Well, maybe I would like to add one more thing, if I may, Madam President, that Mayor Paduto brought a level of integrity to the office that was greatly appreciated. We, as members of council, and my having the privilege to serve as president for a period of six years during the Paduto administration, you know, we worked collectively, and we worked honestly. We differed in opinions at times, but always dealt with those differences. As ladies and gentlemen, we did it respectfully, and we always did it with the best interest of the city at heart. And there was always room for disagreement, and there was always room for compromise. And as the Mayor had stated in his public address, in the time that he had been in office, I believe, Mayor, you said we had one vote that was 5-4, and every other vote was 8-1 or 9-0. And that speaks loudly to the ability of local government to function with integrity and honesty and compromise, and with a focus on the city that we have the privilege to serve, and always acting in its best interest. And that was largely due to the experience and the leadership integrity and honesty that Mayor Paduto brought to that office.
I would say this, this is the most seasoned city council that Pittsburgh may have ever had. You have more experience in this room than at any time that I have been involved in city government. And with a new administration coming in, the one thing that I think that I learned in the years that I was in city council is that power politics is only a short-term solution, that getting that five votes may win you the battle, but it can cost you the war. And I think that the first battle that we had was on the land bank. And if you remember, the sides that were aligning with that first legislation that was coming in and creating the Affordable Housing Trust Fund on the back of it, and council was dividing itself on different sides with it. One of the most active voices against it was Councilman Burgess, and he was adamantly opposed. And instead of just trying to divide the council in getting those five votes, we tried to get every vote that we possibly could, including Councilman Burgess. And in the end of the day, he not only voted for it, but he became the chair of it. And it would have been much easier to try and get five votes than to try to get his support of it, and it would have been much easier to take the pride side and not include his thoughts and his ideas into the final version of that legislation. But I think that that's where council can have a very strong role with the next administration of saying, "Work with us. We represent nine different parts of the city that combined make the total city." Not every neighborhood's going to have the same viewpoint. You work with us. We build stronger legislation. It may not be the same as what you want, but working with us will build something that will represent Pittsburgh better, and you'll have us for the next vote. It's the way that we tried to do the politics of this floor, and it's what I got to see through 19 years of working in this room, of how administrations thought they would win, when in the long term, they would lose. And I think that's why we only had that one 5-4 vote, and I can't even tell you what the issue was, because we always tried to incorporate the voice of council into every bill when there was division. And we were willing to give in order to be able to get the votes that made it more than five.
I swear you must be hearing some of my phone conversations this week.
Let me put this out there. We hear and we heard your voices loud and clear about the kernels, and we know that that vote is not going to pass council. So I met with the council president. She's been meeting with council, and I am sure that we'll work out a compromise with you that will hear the voice of council and your constituents in order to be able to address that issue in a way that will have your voice heard.
I think it's my turn now. Oh, no, it was Councilman Kraus.
Well, Madam President, just one last, one last thing, if I may. But just one last thing, if I may, Madam President, the, you know, having had the Mayor serve on city council for the number of terms that he did, I think that brought a level of understanding, compassion for the work that we do and the difficulty it can bring at times. And with that, I believe it brought experience in the Mayor's office to understand that we are partners in this, that there are elected, 11 electeds here in the city, including council, the Mayor's office, and the Controller's office, and that we accomplish more collectively than we do, leading from a space of division. And I think the Mayor's time on council brought that level of understanding and compassion that really assisted us in being able to work collectively and cooperatively. And I believe the city is a better place because of it. And again, I just, I wish the Mayor Godspeed and all the success that life can bring as he enters into this new phase of public service. And thank you for your time, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you for your really great words. And so now I think it's my time, and I just want to, there's a few things I do want to say. I want to thank you, first of all, for always working with us in a way that's in the best interest of the city of Pittsburgh. And through this whole thing, through this whole time, the thing you keep saying to me over and over again is, "We have to do what's in the best interest of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh residents." And that really resonates with me, because you say it at a time when you could walk away and just not care about what happened. But it's who you are. You have cared about Pittsburgh so much and have done so much, and you hired a team that has bought amazing things to the city. And I'll be honest, you know, you and I, at first, I didn't think we were ever going to work together. But my gosh, I mean, you really showed us how to do it in a way that was so respectful and so kind. And I want people to realize that I've heard all these stories about how vindictive you would be and all this. I've never seen that. And I just told somebody that the other day. I have never seen that. I have seen kindness. I've seen you say, "We'll figure it out. Don't worry. We'll work it out." You know, talk to Dan. And Dan, I want to say, is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And I started to get to work with you, Lindsay, during the pandemic, and you fed so many people in the city of Pittsburgh. And, you know, James bought so much light and chair to all the festivities in Pittsburgh. So you have a team that brings all their special talents, and together, it just worked really well. But mostly, what I appreciated was that you cared about Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh residents from day one, and even as you're preparing to go on to the next phase of your life, you're always putting the Pittsburgh and Pittsburgh residents first. So I really appreciate that. But I also want to say that I appreciate getting to have this working relationship with you that I never thought we would have. And it's not what I had heard. It's not what I had thought it was going to be. You're negotiating with council. Your respect for council has been really tremendous and appreciated. And I've talked to people for the current, you know, for the future administration about ways to work with council, is to work with us as a whole, as you have, to work with us, with the leadership, to, you know, work with us, not through the media, not through... If you know, there's one thing that I never would vote for, you'd pack this room sometimes with people when you first started. Do you remember? And that was my sure way of voting no, because I thought, "I'm never going to give into that, because if I do it once, that's the way we're going to govern." And I thought that that's not the way to govern. We should be able to work together and talk with one another. And that's what we did. And you did that with every one of us. And I just want to thank you so much for being a mayor who cares about Pittsburgh, but who cares and respects council, and got us all to work together for the betterment of the entire city, and hiring a staff that is so talented and so amazing and works so hard. I can't even imagine how hard and the time that they, how hard it was for you all to work for Pittsburgh at times, because the social media has really grown since I was first elected, and in a way that people think that's the way to govern us by what they're saying next on the next tweet or something like that. And I just feel like, that's not the way to govern. That's not the way to do what's in the best interest of Pittsburgh. If you want to do what's right for Pittsburgh, you have to do what's right for Pittsburgh, and you have to listen to constituents in a way that you can bring some compromise. And I think that we're in a bad time in this country where we're so divided, and Pittsburgh's no different. But I think through that all, you have to stay focused on what's best for Pittsburgh, and I think you've done that. And I want to thank you for that very much.
Loved every moment. I don't know if today's landscape of politics was the way it was in 1995, if I would have ever gotten into this. It's a poisonous, vindictive, and binary atmosphere that's out there. And if you want to like something, you have to hate this, or else, you know, you're not, I don't know what the term would be in today's vernacular, but you're not true. That's not the way the world is. That is not the way politics should ever be. This whole notion of this extremism on both sides is destroying democracy, and it's destroying independent thought, and it's creating a world where it's impossible for those that truly engage and enjoy providing the services to people by a poisonous political atmosphere in which people feel that government should be used as a weapon to punish people who think differently than them, other than government should be utilized as a service to uplift. And I just give credit to anybody who can stay in it while the poison is in the well. And... And I think that after twenty-seven years here and a few more years after, you know, in addition to that, in the political realm of Western Pennsylvania and others, over thirty years in this, it starts to wear on you. And in this type of acidic world, it it tears into you. And I think I have more to give, but it is not in this type of an atmosphere and in this type of of work. So I'll find what what did Chuck Knowles say, my life's work? And where that will be, but I don't look back with any regret on over three decades of the work that I have done. And I certainly can see in corners and in areas and in different parts of the city my fingerprints in a better Pittsburgh. So I will be able to see that for decades to come and in improvements for people's lives. I give you guys credit for willing to stay in there and to stay in the ring and to be able to take the slings and arrows of those that aren't adding anything to the betterment, but only trying to drag down those that are working every day to be able to make Pittsburgh a better city.
I think what I I see is it's really making people that truly do care about the city, the state, the county, the country, it's making them not get involved in politics. And I think they're going to end up with a lot of people who don't care but have an agenda. And I mean, that's where I think the apathy of the average voter comes in. I think they need to stop complaining and come out and vote. The people that, you know, say that they don't like some of the things that are happening, but yet they don't come out to vote. So I'll just say, I'm just going to keep focusing on that part moving forward. I'm going to focus on getting more people who care about the city or about our district and other places in the country to come out and vote more. That's what I'm going to start doing more of. I think that that's that's what we need to do because that's what's going to drive all the elections and 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 whatever the agendas are going forward. So with that said, I just want to thank you and your staff for everything that they have done and everything you have done for the city of Pittsburgh. There's, whether we agree or disagree, there's always been respect. And there's always a phone call away. I mean, just a phone call away. I I didn't, I barely even knew Lindsay. I just want to, I barely even knew you. And then when you started doing all this food stuff, I was like, she's amazing. You're just amazing. You really did a lot for the city of Pittsburgh to get us through the pandemic. And Dan Gilman, I think if your wife doesn't see my number again, she'll probably be so thankful. I would give you calls and text messages and my crazy tweets at two o'clock in the morning sometime, or text messages at two o'clock in the morning. I'd be so angry about something. And he would immediately respond and just, let me get you any answers. Let me, let me find out, just as calm as can be. But I know I can be sometimes a little bit crazy, but I want to thank you because my craziness comes because I have passion for Pittsburgh and our people. And so I I thank you for understanding that, for your patience. James, I'm just going to give everybody, tell everybody, when you see the lights on the city county building and people talk about how the building is lit up and how it celebrates and 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 honors so many different events and dates and important things to the city of Pittsburgh, that's James. James did that. And James did the, I will also say that James did the fireworks off the city county building was his idea, not that he did it. But so I want to thank, I want to thank you for all the things that you did to bring Pittsburgh the history, the, and to keep that richness and the banners up on Grandview Avenue and all those things that you did. I want to thank you also for all that stuff. Because, believe me, it really meant a lot. While everybody else is doing things like getting in the weeds and things, you were doing things that made us remember, not forget, things that we should be celebrating. So thank you, James, for all that you've done too. And Mayor Paduta, just thank you. Just thank you very much for your, for serving, for putting up with a lot, but also forgiving so much. And during a time when I know that you were, you lost a brother, you lost your mother, you lost another brother, it was, you were going through a very painful, challenging time personally, but yet you kept Pittsburghers in Pittsburgh's, Pittsburgh's best interests in the forefront. So thank you very much for all that you've given up. With that said, we're going to start with Councilman Lavelle. Reverend Burgess joined us. I apologize. Reverend Burgess, do you have something you'd like to say?
Well, a couple of quick things. First of all, I want to obviously thank the mayor for his leadership. I did hear, I was listening before I got on and Bill, we've had good times, you know? It's been fun, right? We've, you know, I learned my craft from you and Doug, really, you know? Doug put me under the wing and is really, you know, you and I going at it actually taught me about council. You had the institutional knowledge. I had nothing. And I had to, you know, do all this research and figure it out late at night to kind of argue with you. And it actually taught me to be a councilperson. And then, you know, we start working together, and I think we've done some great things from, you know, grew violent stuff to, you know, just that, you know, Lommer Choice, economic development, all kinds of avenues of hope. We've just, you know, been able to do great things together. I appreciate that. I appreciate you. You will go down, I believe, as one of the greatest mayors of our city. Sometimes history is kinder to us than than the moment. And I think after some time, history is going to revel in your accomplishments. I am grateful. One of the things about that has happened is Dan and I have become good friends, lifelong friends. I am, I am proud that he is my my friend and grateful for the friendship, really, and the encouragement on even on the personal note. I have a tendency to want to go off the deep end. He's been a calming force. The interesting part, I listened to you about the, I also listened to you about the 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 political atmosphere. You know, I've been, I've been a pastor for thirty, I've been preaching for forty years, pastoring for thirty-seven years. In forty years, I've never had a member tell me, don't be a pastor. I've been teaching college since nineteen seventy-nine. And all those years, I've never had a student tell me, don't be a professor, don't teach, right? You know, I've I've been a father, you know, of four, married for thirty-seven years, you know, father of thirty, thirty what? Thirty-four years? My children never said that, don't be a father. My wife's never told me, don't be a husband. My deacons didn't tell me, stop being a pastor. But for the first time, I have people telling me, don't be a councilman. Don't do your job as councilman, right? We, we don't want you to do your job as councilman. We'll tell you what you should do or, you know, but if you do your job, we'll never support you again. If you don't do exactly what we say, it's the oddest thing, right? It's the oddest thing. And so I'm not built that way. As you know, I'm not built that way. And so I'm going to do my job until my last day in office. I appreciate the time, and I, and I, looking back on it, didn't appreciate then, the time you and Doug spent teaching me how to be a councilperson and the rules of council and all the new nuances of our city government. The other thing is, and the time I have left, who knows what that is, there are some signature programs I will do all of my power to fulfill. Avenue of Hope is one of them. I think the Office of Community Safety along with the, you know, the the Public Safety Offices, I think those things have to be completed. They are still in in their infancy in some ways, and we have to, as a, as a council, complete it. And then lastly, I think we should do another two or three more Hope choice home things, a couple of choice home things. It used to be Hope Six, but now Choice. I hope we should, we should do a couple more of those, those choice things. But I say all that to say, we wouldn't have got the first one without you and your leadership. And the choice in Lommer is the best choice in the country. I didn't say that Hudson. They bring people from around the country who want to do it to Pittsburgh to show them what it's supposed to look like. And so you've done things that still have national impact. And I, I have no doubt you will continue to serve, right? You're still a young man. You'll continue to serve. And you still have my friendship and my support. And we can, you know, still do things together. I think that, you know, sometimes being right is still being right. And so, you know, on the things that we're right about, I, I intend to still pursue them, still argue. So that's a long way of saying, I appreciate you. You have, you have, you know, my, my daughter, you know, sings Wicked a lot. My daughter's a singer and her and my niece, when she was living with me, they would sing Wicked, you know, and there's a song in Wicked about, you know, about I've been changed for the good because I knew you. And I can honestly say that, Bill, because I knew you, I have been changed for the good. I love you. God bless you.
Thanks, Reverend. I can't say anything of that other than you're still sitting around in Homewood. And I'm getting ready and looking forward to coaching the Westinghouse men's hockey team.
I can ice skate.
Can't legislate, but he can ice skate. Just kidding, they came fast. Sorry, Rev. Anyway, any last parting words from anyone? Mayor?
No, I hope to see you guys all one more time before I
Yeah, for sure.
Get on my horse and head back to the East End. But thank you. And if there are any other questions or concerns with the budget, I I prefer to go through it the way that we have gone through everything else with a cup of coffee in my office and working through and finding common sense solutions and working through to find what's best for the people of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Thank you for always having an opening, open door. Thank you. And with that said, we're going to move on to our next hearing, which will be Councilman Lavelle, the Office of Equity and City Controller. And Councilman Lavelle, I don't know, do you want to recess? Do you want to go right into it?
No, we can go, excuse me, we've got a call. We can go right into it.
Okay. And Councilman Lavelle will chair the next portion of this hearing. Thank you, Councilman.
Thanks, guys.
So we'll now transition to the Office of Equity. And I'll turn it over to our Budget Director, Bill Urbannick, to provide an overview.
Sure. Thank you, Councilman. The Office of Equity seeks to normalize social and racial equity within the city government and our communities. Staff works closely with community partners, government agencies, experts, programs, procedures, and expenditures to make Pittsburgh a community for all. The Office of Equity works to see a Pittsburgh where all city residents have access to the opportunities necessary to satisfy their essential needs, advance their well-being, and achieve their full potential, where social, economic outcomes cannot be projected based upon race, gender, age, or sexual orientation. The former Equal Opportunity Review Commission is now housed within the Office of Equity. From a budgetary perspective this year, the total budget will be one million, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars. It's an increase of one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars or thirteen percent from the twenty-twenty-one budget. Total full-time positions are listed at fourteen. There is a single proposed change to staffing levels by adding a part-time LGBTQIA+ commission staffer for forty thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. Non-salary subclasses increased by forty thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's fourteen percent. Those highlights there include professional services increasing by forty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Additional funding for the LGBTQIA Commission and thirty thousand dollars for an updated disparity study. Operational supplies increased by five thousand dollars, restoring catering for public meetings. Administrative fees are decreased by seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars, removing funding for some conferences and trainings. The Office of Equity does not oversee any trust funds, grants, or capital projects. Back to you, Councilman.
Thank you. And unfortunately, I'm not at the table, so I can't see who is with us from the administration.
Lindsay.
Lindsay, you're still there? Okay, thank you. Is there any remarks you wanted to provide, Director?
Certainly. Thank you, Councilman. Really quickly, the Office of Equity since its inception has been working to ensure that the city of Pittsburgh utilizes a racial equity lens on what we do, not just from hiring, but from our programming and our projects. We've been working really closely with departments to embed every department with this lens as well as ensure that across the city, we're utilizing the racial equity lens to make it pretty more livable and equitable. Our budget this year is pretty straightforward. As Bill mentioned, the kind of biggest difference will be the additional part-time staffer for the LGBTQIA+ Commission. The Commission was formed last year officially, was formerly a task force, meaning that it was really all hands-on deck situation on on trying to provide some of the policy research that they wanted, as well as the admin support. It was a responsibility of several staff members within the Office of Equity rather than a full-time dedic, or a no worries, rather than a dedicated staff person to do this overall. And so similar to how the Gender Equity Commission has a staffer as well as the Welcoming Pittsburgh Initiative, we wanted to put forward to council to consider a part-time staffer to help us ensure that the work within this space continues and that they have, again, a dedicated person to push their initiatives and programs forward.
Thank you. With that, I will turn it over to members, if any members have questions. I did see Councilman Wilson still at the table, I believe.
Thank you, Councilman Lavelle. I just had a couple of questions about the position that oversees the paid sick days. What's the name of that position?
So that person has moved over to OMB, and they might have slightly changed the name, but it's, is this inclusion?
Yeah, I just want to know, yeah, so it's, because it wasn't off sadly, right?
Yes, it was.
So now it's OMB?
Yes.
And is that one position?
It's one.
Is that enough to undertake the, it's on a complaint basis? Is that fulfilling the the role?
You know, at this point, that person has been wonderful in trying to make sure that all the complaints that come through, especially with COVID, that all the complaints that come through are taken care of. As the mayor had mentioned, we do want to give the incoming administration the flexibility to decide, you know, if they'd like to increase that work by providing more staffers. But at the moment, it has been difficult, but Josh has been very diligent to make sure that responses are given to folks who inquire in a swift manner.
Okay, all right. I'm here for the question.
Thank you, Councilman Burgess.
Lindsay, you know, it's also, I did not mention you, the smart person over in the mayor's office. But obviously, you are, I'm very fond of you. You know that. I have great, great respect for your professionalism, talent, and intellect. I just have really, right now, how many, in the Office of Equity, how many now today, how many people are in position? Most of those, those positions are vacant, right?
Yes, Councilman. First and foremost, thank you for your kind words. Currently, and I, we have about six staffers, myself, Alaa Mohammed, Oliver Beasley, might be less than six, actually, Chuck Durham, Inupasna. The rest of the positions are vacant.
Right. And the Office of Equity is really a creation of Mayor Paduta, right?
Yes.
And so, you know, it functions in many ways, you know, to his vision and and, you know, and so the new mayor will have a chance to to imprint his vision. It is one of the places where the mayor's staff has significantly increased over the years, right? That's when you look at the mayor's staff from the previous administrations, the Office of Equity is the place where sort of new staffers were brought in and, you know, in an increased role, an increased office, which did pretty good. And so, but right now, they're, they're not, you know, those positions are not filled mostly. Okay, that's all for me.
Thank you. I see Councilman Kraus. I'm not sure if he has any questions. Councilman Kraus, are you still with us? If not, I do have one question. Well, first, Director Powell, it's been a privilege to work with you. I hope to certainly be able to continue working with you as as you move forward in your career. But it's certainly been a pleasure, and I thank you for all the tremendous work you've done on behalf of the city. I do have one quick question. The disparity study, updating, updating a disparity study, do you know what that's saying? The disparity study, updating, updating a disparity study, do you know what that stands?
Absolutely. So, Councilman, the disparity study, we put in additional money to do a kind of preliminary study. The disparity study, as you know, would probably necessitate upwards of maybe, in my estimation, several hundred thousand dollars. We've been working with a provider through an RFP process who was just selected to kind of help us prime the city for what a full-on disparity study would look like. In order for us to ensure that we are able to update our MWBE goals, we need to have an updated disparity study. And we haven't been able to do that largely, you know, for the cost of said disparity study. So in order to prime ourselves, if that's the direction we'd like to continue to move in, giving ourselves, again, a new disparity study, we wanted to fund a kind of preliminary study so that we are readying ourselves for the full thing.
Okay, thank you.
Lindsey, can I ask you one, one last question?
Of course.
I don't I don't know sure where, I don't sure when it is on the budget hearing, but you and I, because you're, you know, the public doesn't know that many of the mayor's initiatives, you are actually the creator thereof, you know, you are the, you know, the creative genius on that side of the floor. We, we as council know that, but the public does not know that. And so the reason I'm asking, you know, equity, I mean, a question sometimes to Lindsey that may not be directly related to equity is that she helped create lots of stuff that's over in the mayor's office, have her, her DNA on it, her fingerprints on it. There has been some, and I, I don't know, maybe, I'm not sure when the hearing for it is, but since you're here, I'm here, we have a minute. I wanted to sort of ask you, off-subject, a little bit. There's been some talk, I've talked about it, I've talked to Laura about it, you know, talked to Dan about it. And I'm just curious your thoughts about perhaps in next year of merging the Office of Community Health and Safety with the, in the, in the Public Safety Office versus leaving it out there sort of, you know, on its own. Do you have any, that, and, and, you know, the advantage, of course, with, you know, the social workers within, you could probably get them the ability to look at police records eventually and stuff like that. Do you have any, any, any personal thoughts about that?
Thank you for the question, Councilman. I can only speak from my perspective, obviously. Public Safety and the Office of Community Health and Safety may have some other ideas. And obviously, with the incoming administration and how they would like to structure this, these initiatives, I would want to, you know, make sure that, again, that they have their say. But I think that there are a lot of I think that there are a lot of pros to having them separate. A lot of it comes from the, I think personally, the public perception of having a Community Health and Safety Division that is separate from Public Safety, so that when you are engaging with constituents and people who may need help, the idea that this is an entity that lives entirely outside of the Bureau is, is one perspective to have. But I do also want to recognize the challenges that the Office of Community Health and Safety would have if it remains separate. A lot of, there are a lot of concerns about information sharing. So if you want to build a model where social workers are riding in cars with officers sharing information, I believe that there would be some information sharing concerns that if you are, again, a separate entity of the Bureau, they may not be able to share, you know, relevant information about a, a constituent who is, you know, trying to engage in those services. So I would say largely it depends on the overall vision, how you, how you, if you want the social worker aspect of it to be completely separate or more of a, like ancillary piece of, of the Bureau. But again, I think that that depends on the direction that the incoming administration and OCHS and the Bureau would want.
Yeah, because I have this laser-like focus on gun violence and on, on gun violence, which has been in many ways describe my career. In order for the group violence system to actually really, really work, and for those social workers to be effective in terms of call-ins, in terms of providing social work, providing social work resources to those most at risk in intervention programs, I think it is really important, really important, that they're on the grounds with all the information and be able to pull, be able to use every data, information, every program, every lever to move those likely at-risk individuals from a life of, of dangerous things into a different life. And so that's sort of, because I'm kind of narrowly focused, you know, I'm less focused on public perception, I'm like laser-like focused, and that component has been missing, has always been missing from group violence, because we've never wanted to fund it completely. Now that we have funded over in this area, we have the social workers, we have the bodies, I'm going to advocate at some point, I guess I'm starting already now, that it be moved underneath Public Safety, so the coordination would be complete, so that you have the GBI workers working hand-in-hand with the social workers, which we know is necessary for the moral work, right? And providing adequate services and to those families and alternative to life of crime. And I don't think, no, I know it won't be as effective unless it is, is, it is coupled inherently in that way. And so, so I just wanted, I just wanted, I said at this moment, it's the thoughts been on my mind for like the last two, three weeks. You know, I've been talking privately about it, and, you know, you're, you have in many ways helped create the office and, and is part of the many things that if you're, your legacy to the city. And, and I hope in some way, I'm putting on my, my prophetic hat, I, I hope in some way, the future has you serving our cities more. I think we could be greatly, greatly, greatly helped sometime in the future by your participation in city government. So we'll talk more about it. That's kind of my thoughts. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. And I appreciate you asking Director Powell the question. I think her perspective actually matters. Because I'm with you in that I generally think it should be within public safety. However, I think part of what I heard her sort of speaking towards was, part of the idea behind this was also in public trust, in building public trust. And so even as you move to potentially put it within public safety, building the level of public trust necessary for it to be there is critical. I just don't think we can lose that point that she sort of articulated. So thank you. If there are no further members with questions, we can let Ms. Powell go, and then we'll move on to the Office of the Controller.
Thank you all so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you for all you've done.
Mr. Chair, before you go into the next meeting with the Controller, I just want to make sure that members know that we're switching the URA and City Planning hearings. City Planning will go before the URA today with Councilman Wilson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did not know that. So I see our esteemed Controller taking his seat. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Budget Director to provide an overview.
Should have my mic on first. The City Controller is the fiscal watchdog for the citizens of the city of Pittsburgh. It is the job of the City Controller to protect city tax dollars from waste, fraud, and abuse by auditing all city government-related expenditures. The Controller also conducts audits of all city departments and authorities, both on the performance level as well as fiscal, and provides recommendations to, to both council and the residents at large. The changes for the Office of City Controller this year, as proposed in the mayor's budget, total budget $4,793,111. That's an increase of $176,000 or 3.8%. Total full-time positions will remain at 57, same as many of the prior years. There are also no changes to non-salary subclasses and only one minor change to staff salaries. A clerk two was promoted from an 18D to an 18E, an increase of $2,365. City Controller has a couple of trust funds, Employee Travel Expense Advance Fund, that's the revolving fund of $30,000. Current balance as of last week was $19,600 vending trust fund the Controller has. It was actually closed, but still has a small balance of $1,700 as well as the Controller's Fiscal Management Information System Trust Fund, closed in 91 and 2000, still has a balance of $20 in it. And with that, I'd hand it back to you, sir.
Thank you. Control Lam, is there anything you would like to add?
Thank you very much. Thanks for the opportunity today. This is the first time that I've been in council with our not-so-new Deputy Controller, Rachel Heisler, joined our office in January of this year and has done great work in helping us to get through what's been a very challenging year in a lot of ways. But we were able to continue the work of the city. We were able to timely report out the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report as well as the Popular Annual Financial Report, and continue to maintain all of our, our web access, our, our digital footprint, all of the work that we do around transparency. We were able to continue to do that work as well as the day-to-day work of accounts receivable and, and the audits that we do. In 2021, on a performance audit basis, we were, we did a, a pretty substantial audit with the Citizens Police Review Board, which was sort of the first step in council's new model, where the civilian police review board, Citizens Police Review Board, will be acted in an advisory capacity to our office as we are at the Police Bureau. And we are now at the Police Bureau conducting that audit and will, and anticipate being its completion very soon. We were also in Animal Care and Control. We were, we did an audit of Pittsburgh Community Television, and we're currently dealing with the issues that we saw with tax collection in the Finance Department this year. So those are the performance audits that we're, have completed or are close to completing. We also were in other departments on a fiscal audit basis. We were in parks and we were in public works. We did a fairly substantial fiscal audit at the Stanley Ice Rink earlier this year. And then the annual follow-up report for our fiscal audits that we do every year, and the annual audit of tax abatement and tax increment finance programs, as well as the, the typical audit, the Police Property Room and the other, the other things that we do. So it was, it was a successful year, though a challenging year. And, you know, when you bring in a new deputy in a situation where they really can't see the employees' faces every day, I know it, it can be a challenge for Rachel, but she's, she's done a fantastic job. I would just tell you about 20, moving into 2022, first, in a general statement about moving in 2022, you know, a lot of what we deal with next year will be related around the ARPA funds and making sure that that money is being properly spent and transparently reported. We do have a concern about the allotment there. Because if you look at that allotment on the ARPA funding, you know, 330 some million dollars, and there's only 200,000 set aside for auditing and reporting, that's a very, very small percentage. In fact, that 200,000 will likely be beaten up by your contract with Mar Dussel. But there's going to be a lot of work in the Finance Department and some work in our department that could also be charged back to those funds. And we would suggest, as we move forward, we take a look at that and, and how those monies can be redirected to pay for the significant regulatory and administrative requirements the city's going to have to go through in, in tracking and reporting those funds. But our individual budget for our department, Bill has, has gone over. We are going to make a couple of minor amendments. I talked to Bill about it this morning on, on some salary adjustments in the office. But other than that, we're, we're, we're ready to go with the budget as a percentage.
Thank you. So questions from members?
I have questions.
Council President?
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you, Controller, for being here, for all the work you do. So I heard you mention the ARPA funds. Will you also look into the school district's ARPA funds? Would that not be in your jurisdiction?
Yeah, I, I would love to. I think it's beyond our, our jurisdiction out there. That would actually be the Auditor General's role. We are actually putting together a report for the new superintendent on, on some concerns we have, and that will be one of them. If they invite me in, certainly we would do it. But I, I don't have the authority right now to audit those funds or to track those funds. We'll do the best we can do just based on the invoicing that comes through. So we'll keep track of that spending. But, but as far as an overall look, I think we're going to have to rely on the Auditor General right now for that, unless we get invited in by the district.
Do you think that's going to happen?
I don't know. I mean, they invited us in, uh, uh, last year to look at their technology, and we did a pretty substantial, we did a, a quick review of the problems they were having in technology when they moved to remote learning. And we were obviously involved out there in, in some of the issues around the superintendent last year. But like I said, we typically do not, other than doing our basic auditing of invoices and the audits that we do at the schools themselves for the activity funds and those kind of things, we typically do not do performance-based auditing or even major financial audits of the district, because that's really in the hands of the Auditor General.
I want to ask, I have to just, I just want to say real quickly, my granddaughter's watching, so I want to say hi to Natalie. But with that said, she's two. With that said, I remember when I was first elected, I asked you to go in and audit the school district, and you did. But it was because the same thing, that you have to be in, somewhat invited in. And I'm not sure if I understand that process, you know, why you would have to be invited in. But at the same time, I still have some of the same concerns I had back then, only I think they've escalated since then with the school district. And, and I think that with our, our profs, I think we're all going to be watching what's happening with them, you know. I think we all have some concerns because it all came so quickly and we moved to get them into the, you know, to get the help for a lot of people that they were requesting into a lot of different places. But I think with that said, that, that came with some, some concerns that, that are still overlapping and outstanding. So, but I, but my, my concerns with the school district are significant. And so I'd, I'd like to know, like, are you in talks with the Auditor General?
So we, 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 we have similar concerns. And we have, we actually have been working on pulling together all the information that has been provided to our office over the last two years, three years. During the entire investigation by the State Ethics Commission that was going on at the district, people calling in with concerns, they had issues, they had, we, we are, we are, we are putting that into a, a report that we want to submit and, and meet with the new superintendent, just to go over those concerns that have been raised. Pretty sure he's aware of most of them. But we do have some recommendations moving forward. And when I hear that the school district is suggesting that in the next five years, they've got a $30 million deficit or more, close to $40 million deficit, that raises a lot of red flags for me. And so, you know, we, we want to, we want to make a suggestion to them that they take a, a serious look at their entire financial picture, including potentially bringing in the Department of Education in a advisory role over budget matters out there. And not, not in Act 47 situation or a distressed school district situation, but they, by their own admission, are suggesting a very substantial deficit in the next few years. So if we can preempt that now by discussing what that means moving forward, I think it's important for us to do. And I think, you know, I'm hoping that the superintendent and the board will be receptive to that suggestion.
I hope so, Jim. If there's anything we can do to help with that, please let us know. I just think that that's, I, I think back, and I do remember the Auditor General, when Jack Wagner was the Auditor General, he audited Patrick Risha's contract when he was the superintendent of, I can't remember what schools it were, it was at the time. But he had, he had audited that contract. And I, I just think that overall, there's some concerns with a lot of the superintendent buyouts that are occurring. And then we're seeing another one.
I, I, I totally agree.
Just want to thank you for your work. And, and I think the school district and the board has a difficult, you know, job as, as well. So it's not pointing fingers, it's just, you know, how can we help them to be the best that they can be for our city?
I mean, that's been our attitude on everything, whether it's school district or whether it's here. Our role is to try to make positive recommendations to help government work better. And so while some people want to make an audit, an adversarial process, that's not our way. And so while some people want to make an audit, an adversarial process, that's not our way. I mean, we try to come in and make as, you know, assess the situation, compare what we're doing with best practices and make recommendations for improvement. That's, that's our goal in every audit that we do.
You do a good job of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? Councilman Wilson or Councilman Burgess?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to ask you a general question about revenue. What's your thoughts on the future revenues, but in particular parking?
Well, this is the problem. I mean, this is, this is a concern that I've had and I've raised this year. And and so, as you know, we meet in August or so every year. To talk about whether or not the revenue projections are reasonable. I've raised some questions about the numbers that we're operating on right now. And I think my concerns are bearing out that they, that we were overly optimistic about how quickly parking would return. And so, you know, Bill and I have talked about it and we've talked about it with Director Paulus. And moving forward, we are going to need to dip into ARPA money to cover those, those losses. Fortunately, we've had some other categories of taxes outperform, right? So this year you see a big outperformance in the transfer tax as an example. So, so at the end of the day, the budget isn't as affected as it would be. But but when you look at these, these revenues that rely so much on whether it's on special events. Or or just daily commuting, like parking, we're, we are, we're, we're having, we're going to struggle. And I think we're going to struggle for a while. You know, when you look at what's going on in downtown Pittsburgh right now. So many organizations, large organizations are still at a work-at-home model, at least for some days a week. So, you know, typically when you had people coming in four or five days a week and now they're only coming in one or two days a week. That has a dramatic impact on parking and the revenues that you receive from parking. So it is a, it's a, it's a real concern for me moving forward. I do think that a lot of the special event revenue will begin to come back. People seem comfortable enough going to Steeler games and to concerts. You know, we had a very large concert this summer that sold out. And we've had Steeler games where people don't seem all that concerned about being in big spaces, particularly if you're outside. Maybe we struggle a little more with the Penguins because it's an indoor situation. But we are seeing a pretty good return to special events. So that will drive up some of your parking revenue. Along with your amusement tax revenue, which we really got hit badly last year.
Okay. And and just for clarity, the parking taxes, all cover garages, right?
It's parking taxes paid on all the garages, right? So it's, you know, and it's paid at surface lots where there's a, you know, so like a special event surface lots, it gets, it gets paid. And then the lots around the arena from commuter parking, it gets paid there. So but again, a lot of that is also really requires good auditing too. You know, I don't know, I'm not sure how much auditing we're doing of those lots these days. You know, in the finance department, it's one of the suggestions I made to the incoming administration is that they've really got to get back to doing audits of revenue. Which, which our office doesn't do. We don't audit revenue. That's the treasurer and the finance department's job. And they really need to get back to doing more significant audits on revenue.
Good recommendation. But it's not, there's no tax on the curb side?
Well, there's no tax at the meter. Yeah, right. Yeah, there's no, yeah, there's not, we, we get, we get meter revenue. We do get, you know, we get a substantial bit of revenue from meters that we split with the parking authority. But there's not a per se a tax to it. Yeah, it's basically rolled in.
Switching gears here, the other question I have was just, now, how do you decide what department, what trust fund you're going to audit unless, you know, unless council requests?
So we, 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 we sit down and we go through, first off, we're required to get everywhere. So we just try to make sure we're getting everywhere. We have, in this city, as it's set up. Well, is it when I first got here, we had two major departments. We had public safety and we had public works. Public Works now has been broken into Public Works and and Domi. So we were always in one, we were always either in public safety or in public works, if not in both, all the time. So our goal was always to stay in public safety all, all the time. And when you finish the police bureau, then you do fire bureau. And when you finish that, you did EMS. We finished that, you did BBI. We did that, you did ammo control. So we were always in public safety. Even though, even though the charter requires us to only be in a department once every few years. We never leave public safety because it's such a major part of what we do. And and the bureaus are pretty much their own departments in, in, in public safety. So we, so we move through those. When something comes up, we, we want to be able to be flexible enough to go. So we don't, we don't set a, we don't set an audit schedule in stone. We have a rough idea of what we want to do in a given year and then, and what, but with the flexibility to do something if something comes up. Obviously, we knew in twenty twenty-one, we had a big problem with tax collection in the finance bureau. Which is why we moved into that bureau right away when that, when, when, when those problems started getting all the calls. I'm sure you were getting calls like everybody else about people's checks not getting cashed. So, so we're down there now and I think we're going to come out with some good recommendations for them moving forward.
Any that you haven't gotten to in a while?
What's that?
Any of that you haven't gotten to in a while?
Departments?
Yeah.
It's been a while, like I said, because of the way that we're around the, 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 the public safety department. It's time for us to be at EMS. So we haven't been in EMS in a while. And so we'd like to get back there. We still, you know, it's been, it's hard to believe, but it's as long as it's been since we've been at PWSA. I mean, we were at PWSA at the early stages of this new model where they have the PUC now. So we haven't been back to look at that. We'd like to, we'd like to get that. Which, which leads to the next problem is we need more auditors, you know, we need, you know, our, our office originally was seventy-two employees. And under Act forty-seven, we're dropped now to fifty-two. I'm not saying we need to get back to seventy-two, but we need to add auditors and audit teams so that we can do more and get, get around to places in a more timely way.
And the trust funds going on the same?
Trust funds are actually, trust funds are actually in better shape than they were when I got here. And Bill, I worked with Bill and with Marty Elickin from our office and and the finance department to eliminate a lot of trust funds. Because there were a lot of trust funds that there was just no activity. And but, but it still required us to audit them every two years. So we, 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 we were pretty good about downsizing that. Now, we've, we've added a few in the last couple of years, so it's gotten, gone back up again. But yeah, so it's time for us to review it again. As a matter of fact, we have a couple in our office that we need to, that are technically eliminated because there's no activity. So we just need to go through the process of actually eliminating them in total.
Okay. Thanks for your time, I don't know if you have any further questions.
No, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Burgess?
Yes, I have a couple of things. First, first of all, Controller Lamb. You know the great esteem that I hold you in. And I'm grateful for your leadership and your friendship. Now, how long have you been controller?
I'm, I'm, I started the day you did.
So you're, we're, we're, I kind of, that's what I kind of thought, right? We're.
We started on the same day in two thousand and eight.
So you and I and Bruce will be the, the old guys in the city, right?
Well, you and Bruce might be.
In terms of service.
Watch it, watch it, guys.
That's right. I think I, and I think we also started with Councilman O'Connor.
No, no.
Sorry, he was later, he was later. That's right.
No, no, he did not start with us. He came in on a special.
Yep.
No, he came in, he came in, no, he didn't come in special. He came in, he came in the next term, I think.
Right, right.
So, yeah, he's a, he's a term behind us.
Yeah, Councilman O'Connor followed Councilman Shields.
Yeah, he's a, he's a, he's, he's four years behind us.
You're right. You and I and Councilman Kraus started the same day.
So. You have been, you know, extraordinarily helpful in terms of crafting fiscal stuff, right? When I've been involved, you know, a couple of times as finance chair, you know, we've done some safeguards. And, you know, you're as active as we asked you to be, right? That if council asked you to participate, we get the pension, say you were extremely active. You, you know, you've been active when we've talked about capital budget reform. And so, and then when you're not asked to be active, right, you're not. I mean, you're active in doing your role, but you're not as active with council and in council's ongoing activity unless we asked you, right? And so I'm going to at least suggest, well, there, there are two things I want, I want, I guess, let me, let me turn the first one first and I'll come back to it. One of the, the two issues that I, I guess I want to chat with you about is one is, is Wilkinsburg, right? This whole idea of merging Wilkinsburg, especially merging the school districts. Because at first, when they started having this conversation, there was a belief that the, the school districts wouldn't have to be merged. But then we later found out that if the governments merged, they will merge both the governments and the school districts. And I know that it would have great, that the merger would have great financial impact on the school district. Taking on the debt and the buildings of Wilkinsburg to an organization that's already going to be in debt. Do you have any thoughts on that?
So I, I've talked about this merger as a municipal merger. And and I do find it to be a sound decision financially from both sides. The, the question over the school district is an interesting one because first primarily remember that all the kids in Wilkinsburg from sixth grade to twelfth grade. Are already in the Pittsburgh public schools. So we're only talking about your, that, that primary elementary school student body coming over. As well as, as you mentioned, the, whatever legacy costs are at Wilkinsburg. We, I know that I've talked to a couple of people who have been looking at this issue. They've asked me to take a look at their findings around the finance, finances and what it would mean to the Pittsburgh school district. So I don't know that I'm ready to say anything about it today. But I will be weighing in on what I think the financial impact of that merger would be to the district. So I, my guess is it's not as impactful as you might think, but I don't know. We want to see, we want to see those numbers and see what that means.
Okay, so that's, so you're already on it. So that was going to be my, my request is that you kind of look at that, but you're already, you're already doing that. I think secondly, and I don't want to be the canary in the coal mine. But now we have the what, we're in the Delta variant now? Is that, is that, is that the, the variant we're in, the COVID? The, the pandemic is not over. I have people who want to act like it's over, but the pandemic is not over. And we don't really, I mean, we, no one saw the pandemic coming. We don't know the after effects of the pandemic, right? We just don't know. I'm really concerned as an elected official in, in the out years of our budget. I am, you know, when the, when the, when the ARPA money is gone, I'm extraordinarily concerned about the, 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 um. The fiscal health of our city. And I'm going to suggest, at least in part, before, before I, I want you to comment on it, but also, well, let me ask you comment, then I'll tell you what I think we, you may want to think about moving forward. What's your thoughts about, about the out years and our, our fiscal health?
So obviously, this five-year plan that we're working with right now as part of this budget process. We make some assumptions about revenue in the out years. And in addition to the comments I made earlier about parking and special event-related revenue. I think the big question is what happens with real estate? And particularly, commercial real estate moving forward. My, my, the early indication is a bit surprising, I think. Because we have not had the plethora of appeals of assessed valuations. That you might think you would get, given that people are changing their footprint in buildings. And 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 you would think there'd be a significant drawdown of value of your commercial structures. While we have had that, we haven't had it to the degree that you might think. And I think part of that is that companies were under lease. They, they've continued to pay their leases. Some of them got PPP money from the federal government or other assistance through the state or the Small Business Administration. And so they've been able to maintain their, their costs of their footprint. But as time goes on, what happens? If you're having, if you have a staff of a hundred people who were coming to work five days a week. And now they're switching off days and coming two days a week. Do you still need the same space that you had before? And what does that do to the value of downtown buildings? The good news is that there's still significant demand in downtown for, for residential. So it, it, it's the opportunity to do some conversion to create a more twenty-four-hour neighborhood in downtown Pittsburgh. And that may stem any drop in valuation that you see on the commercial side. So I think it's, it's a wait and see, but I do, I do think it lends to council having these discussions about policy. Around encouraging that kind of the activity in downtown to maintain the value of the downtown commercial properties. And that would, that would go out to the, to the neighborhood commercial properties as well. Residential real estate is still firm and still solid. So I, I think there you don't see as big a problem. But again, real estate tax is our biggest tax revenue. And it's something that we have to be cautious of and concerned about moving forward.
And so one of the things I'm going, so my solution. And, you know, whoever the finance chair is of council next year, I will suggest to that person. That we go back to having sort of regular conversations with you and in regular public processes with you participating. I think that as we move forward into a new year, a new administration, a lot of changes, some new people. One of the things that we can provide value in, you, I, Bruce, at least, and council as a whole, being that council is, is very mature. We can provide institutional knowledge as to why things are the way they are. And then what, what changed that we can put, we can put the change in historic perspective. But also I think we can, we can, we can be a calming effect on, on radical change. Which, which I, I think, given the pandemic and given our, our tenuous financial, you know, just coming out of Act forty-seven. And our, our sort of tenuous perch, I, I think may not be a great idea. So I'm hoping, and we did that, we did this earlier when I, you know, we, we spent a lot more time working with you early, earlier councils. And so I'm going to suggest that we kind of go back to that model of working with you. Because of your great, great, great financial knowledge and institutional knowledge of every department of our city. I think it would bode this council well to partner with you as we move forward in initiatives, programs and oversight.
Well, I, I appreciate that and I agree with it. And so certainly we will be available to discuss these matters moving forward. I would also suggest to you that I, I think it's almost required, given the monitoring responsibility we're going to have over the spending of these federal dollars. Our, our, our continued conversation is going to be important.
So, so let's talk, let's talk about that just for a minute. So how, in your mind, is there a public component to that? That there needs to be a, a public component as well as a private component? Kind of which, tell me your thinking.
I'm not sure what, a, a public component to what?
In terms of your oversight of the funding, do, do, do we need to have, you know, more, more times like this when we're talking in public? About the administration of those funds and the administration of fiscal stuff? I mean, you know, whether it's in post-agendas, you know, whether it's at standing committees. Do you think there needs to be more conversations and oversight in a, in a public way? That's really my question.
Yeah, I do, I do. And as far, and whether it's, whether it's in open meeting or in, in just individual discussion, I think it's going to be important. And, you know, the, the relationship, you know, my office, we are not policymakers. That's not, that's not our job. And we don't want that to be our job. I'm certainly, well, I'm willing to weigh in on any question I can that council has. But at the end of the day, policy is driven by this council and by the mayor's office. And so I'm certainly willing to suggest when maybe we're taking a step in the wrong direction. But you're certainly willing to take that step if it disagrees with my opinion. So, but I'm certainly agree with you that those conversations, whether formally or informally, public or, or in, in closed session. Are important for us as we go through this. It's going to be required of us to, just to comply with all of the regulatory reporting that's going to be necessary for this federal funding.
I guess the last thing, and this is something I said when we were having the, the, the oversight of the ARPA funding. That the public really. of the ARPA funding, that the public really viewed this as money that just could be spent, you know, somewhat on wish lists, but that the ARPA money actually has extraordinarily complex strings attached to it. It, it, it was not money we could just put willy nilly into anything we wanted, but has to be specifically spent at specific times in very specific ways.
Well, that's, that's, that's actually, that's great. And it's true. And in fact, when you think of the money we've already received, the only money that has been moved out of the trust fund is the money that's been moved to the city itself to cover current budget year, general funds, general obligations and general funds in the operating budget, or to the current year capital budget. Those are the only monies that have been moved. No money has been moved to the URA. No money has been moved to the PWSA. And so, and it's because, I believe, council insisting on a, a, a strong cooperative agreement with the city and those organizations, that we've been able to make sure that we're able to monitor and, and move those monies as needed. And as of yet, we don't even have those cooperative agreements in place. So as of right now, the only money that's moved out is the money that the city has spent itself.
All right. That's it for me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Reverend. I, I do have one question because I share the concern of what the city's budget is going to look like once the ARPA monies dry, dry up. I'm also concerned that the new administration will be negotiating a new police contract in the, in the coming soon. I'm just, what, do you have any thoughts about what that contract could potentially do to our budget?
Well, the, the, the five-year plan does anticipate some increase for personnel, both public safety and non, you know, uniform and non-uniform. Whether we've guessed right about what that increase is going to be is a question. But I think we do anticipate that salaries are going to go up over the next five years. But again, that's, that's really a part of that negotiation. The, I think the bigger concern that I have is the one we've, we've talked about earlier, which is what happens to revenue post ARPA and post pandemic. Right now, things look fairly decent, but, you know, it remains to be seen. I mean, we have a new, we have a new round of a new variant that people are concerned about just over the weekend. And, and what impact is that going to have? So fortunately, here in the city of Pittsburgh, I, I've argued this and made this statement before, I think we've done better than a lot of other cities because of our diverse employment base. You know, the fact that most of our employers in the city were not laying off employees throughout the pandemic, the fact that the, in the peak of the pandemic in 2021 and in 2020, we were generating basically the same amount of wage tax as we were in 2019, speaks volumes about how well and diverse our, our local economy is. So, I mean, I, 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 I see your concerns, Councilman, but some of that I think we have anticipated. And it's really going to depend on, on that negotiation between the administration and the police bureau and the, the FOP.
Okay, thank you. And then lastly, and this is more of a comment, but if you want to respond, feel free. You and I have had a number of talks over the last couple of years about the banking industry and trying to get our, our dollars into banks that are going to be doing more lending. And we've also talked about getting them into smaller banks and even credit unions that are doing the sort of the bulk of the lending, especially in African-American neighborhoods. And we, and we've had the conversation, but we haven't really dug in. And on my list of to do this year, this coming year is to really dig in and begin working with you on that issue as well. So especially on the heels of the report that recently came out that spoke about the lack of lending by banks in African-American neighborhoods. I really think we need to take a hard look at how to best utilize our dollars to leverage those private dollars for investment. So that's just more of a comment and something I look forward to working with you on next year.
I'm, I'm, I'm glad you brought it up because I actually have it written here to, to bring, to bring up, you know, doing some kind of local banking pilot for small banks. And I, and, and I think the, the, you know, a conversation with our committee and particularly with PCRG, who have been so helpful in identifying policies to help get more money out to local banks would be helpful. Obviously, as you know, the biggest problem we have with small banks is that the regulatory structure and requirements for being a city depository are just too onerous for them. And so we've got to find a way to pilot a, a less cumbersome process for banks of a certain size and maybe even in certain neighborhoods so that we can get, and the one thing we know is that these are the banks that are most efficient at getting that money out into the neighborhood. And so, you know, I think we, we have to focus on that this year and, and, and find a way to get more of that depository money into some of these banks that are doing really good work in their neighborhoods.
I, I agree 100%. I did have a conversation with the executive director of the Hill District Federal Credit Union about that. And he asked, and I actually had to follow up with him, but he asked that I send him the requirements so that he could take a look and then see what suggestions, excuse me, he could potentially make to that process to make it easier for organizations like his to apply. Excuse me. So I will certainly follow up and look forward to working with you on that. If there are no further comments from members, I want to inform the public that our budget hearings will continue today at 1:30, first with the Department of City Planning, which is going to be chaired by Councilman Gross, and I do believe. And then following that, we'll have a number of our authorities, beginning with the URA, and that will be chaired by Councilwoman Gross. With that, we need a motion to recess.
I'm moved.
And second it, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are in recess. Thank you all.